I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion by Mr. Tucker. Second by Ms. Mendoza, please vote. Correct.
Yes.
One. Correct. Go ahead, come on. Oh, you want to wait till C one? Okay, we'll wait till C one. And then, Mr. Reeland? Okay, for C one? Okay. Thank you very much. Any other one, any other public comments? Do we have any digital?
No public comments via email.
Thank you very much, I appreciate that. So moving on to item A presentations, A one proclamation for Waste and Recycling Workers Week. So we're gonna start off with that one. And what I'll do is I'll read the proclamation and then we'll go down to the front, take pictures, all that. So I do see some of our friends from our local area here. So it says, City of Imperial proclamation, Waste and Recycling Workers Week. It says, whereas the the health and well-being of our communities greatly depends on the waste and recycling workers who ensure our neighborhoods remain safe, clean and safe. And whereas according to the Centers for Disease Control and Prevention, many diseases have been eradicated due to higher public sanitation standards resulting from effective garbage disposal. And whereas these hard-working individuals perform an essential public service by managing waste collection, recycling and environmental stewardship. Whereas the men and women employed by Republic Services make significant contribution to safety, health and welfare of Imperial residents. And whereas Waste and Recycling Workers Week serves as an opportunity to express our gratitude and appreciation for their vital contributions. So now therefore I, the mayor, Robert Amparano, on behalf of the Imperial City Council, do hereby proclaim June sixteenth through June twenty-second of two thousand and twenty-four as Waste Recycling Workers Week in the City of Imperial. So pass and adopt this nineteenth day of June two thousand and twenty-four at a regular Imperial City Council meeting. So thank you very much. So congratulations for that. I'll do, we'll come down here, take some pictures and then the mic, I'll open up the mic for you guys.
You know how important I told everyone back there, I'm coming.
You know, one of the things, and George, the mic is over, if you guys need to... Want to say anything? Paul?
Hi, Mayor, Council and staff. I'm George, George Taylor. I thought this was gonna be so important that I told those folks back in Missouri, I'm coming here.
You gonna transfer back now?
Not quite, not quite. My leadership team is here. Good transition to to these guys. Peter is here, our general manager. He thought this was important enough to come over here also. So anyway, I just wanted to thank you guys. It's been an honor working with you guys. Republic Services has always been a pillar and a part of this community, and we will continue to do that. Hopefully, as we move down the line, that you guys understand that we, as it says in the proclamation about essential, we believe we are essential, and that we want to continue this relationship a long time in the future.
Absolutely, thank you very much. So I wouldn't go too far, George. So I have here a, the next item, which would be A two, it's a certificate of recognition for George Taylor with Republic Services. So the certificate of recognition proudly presented to George Taylor, your dedication, professionalism and community engagement has contributed contributed to a successful partnership between the City of Imperial and Republic Service Services. We extend our heartfelt gratitude and wish you the continued success dated June nineteenth. So thank you very much for that. So once again, we do appreciate all the hard work the Republic Services does put into the City of Imperial. Just recently, somebody was telling me about the services that they emptied the trap, the grass, and it fell all over the ground. And the driver stopped, picked up the broom, brushed it all, swept it all up, put it back and just, thank you. It was one of those things. So thank you guys very much for the dedication, the hard work. So appreciate it. So with that, we're gonna move on to our consent agenda. So all items appearing under the consent agenda will be acted upon by the City Council with one motion without discussion. Should any council member or any other person's request that any other, any item be considered separately, that item will be taken up that time determined by the mayor. So we have eight items on the consent agenda. And I'll entertain a motion if anybody or any change.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Got a motion by Mr. Tucker. Second by Ms. Mendoza, please vote. Correct.
Yes.
One. Correct. Correct, so I was gonna excuse myself.
Can we approve it all and he just abstains?
Yeah. So do you want to amend your?
Motion.
So you're gonna withhold warrant? You want to keep it or amend it?
Keep it, let's keep it.
Keep it the way it is?
Yes.
All right, we'll keep it the way it is. So please vote.
Motion carries four zero with one abstain.
All right, thank you very much. With that, we'll move on to C, public hearings. So a public hearing for the purpose of approving approving the engineering report regarding Imperial Lighting Maintenance District number one, Wildflower and Pasel, they're sold and authorize the levy collection assessments commencing the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five with Mr. Monriquez.
Good evening, Mayor, Council.
I'm sorry, I'm gonna open this at seven twenty-three. Dude, yeah, do all of, all of. Do we have any questions on this? I know we had a public comment from Mr. Gonzalo Gerardo? Oh, that C one. You guys had told me C one. Okay.
A motion to approve.
You got a motion?
And a second.
I'm sorry, we'll close the public comment at seven twenty-four.
And now I'll make a motion to approve.
I'll second.
Got a motion and a second, please vote. No, you just gave us what we're doing. You want a full presentation?
A little bit more explaining of like what the engineer's report is.
Do you have that information? Last meeting.
Okay.
You okay with that? So we got a new system, we're still, we're still trying to figure it out.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. So moving on to item C two, public hearing for the purpose of approving engineering report regarding Imperial Landscape Maintenance District number one, Wildflower and Pasel, they're sold and authorize a levy of collection of assessments commencing the fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, Mr. Monriquez. And I'll open this at seven twenty-six. Do we have any questions on this? Question from the council?
No.
None? Okay, so all will, any other questions? If not, all closes at zero seven twenty... About zero seven twenty-seven, oh, I'm sorry, seven twenty-seven. With that, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make, make a motion to approve.
Got a motion by Mr. Tucker?
I'll second.
Second by Ms. Obeza Martinez, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
So moving on to item C three, public hearing for the purpose of approving the engineering report regarding the Imperial Landscape Maintenance District number two, Sky Ranch, and authorize a levy collection of assessment commencing in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, Mr. Monriquez.
Thank you, Mayor, Council. This is for Sky Ranch, District two, number one, to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty-four, ordering the levy collection of maintenance assessments related to Imperial Landscape Maintenance District number two for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five. And number two, to adopt resolution twenty twenty-four dash forty-five, amending and or approving the engineer's report for Imperial Landscape Maintenance District number one for fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five.
Okay, and I'll open it up at nineteen twenty-eight, or seven twenty-eight. So I know we do have the comments now. Any comments from the council? Any none? About Mr., yes, sir. We do have an increase. So with that, Mr. Gonzalo Gerardo? Okay. Ms. Reeland?
My name's Rick Breeland. I live at twenty-four fifty-two O'Hare Avenue. I've lived there sixteen years, seventeen years, something like that. I've spoke to you guys about the situation before. These are pictures of the landscaping in Sky Ranch, not next to Sky Ranch, it's inside the park, it's inside our development. I said on that diocese, when the City of Imperial decided that they were gonna take over the landscaping from a contractor, Jackie Loper, along with the current city manager, said it Jackie Loper, along with the current city manager, said it was gonna be much better, it was gonna be much cleaner. We're gonna have all the self-control that we didn't have right now. And my question to them at that point was, you have a contract with somebody and they don't fulfill the contract, you don't pay them. Well, I can't do that with you guys because you guys hold the money, you collect the money, and now look at where we're at. It was not this way when the prior, there was two prior companies that had the, the contract. Three pros, they left because the owner died. Then Keith from ELI took over and I don't know what the problem was between you guys, and when I say you guys, I'm talking about the city. Saying that he wasn't fixing stuff, and once again, some of you I know from previous contact. If you have business and something you pay, if I pay Mr. Tucker to, to do something for me and he don't do it, I'm not gonna pay him. And since you guys have taken over the landscaping district, and I think there's a couple of us here. We're tired. We're not an endless bank that you can just draw from, and that's what's going on there. It needs to stop. If you can't do the job, and I, I'm gonna tell you to your face, you can't do the job. It's horrible. There's weeds, there's broken sprinklers. I walk there every morning. And I'm telling you, I met with Dennis, I met with Tony, and they said, oh, we're gonna get it better. It hasn't gotten better. It's gotten worse. When you can kill a, uh, an oldiander bush. You're doing a hell of a job. And we've had a lot of those killed, and I know I've heard from other people, oh, there's tampering, there's this, there's that. I don't buy that. Police department's in and around our neighborhood all the time. If there was somebody tampering with stuff, like they said, we have a camera at the dog park. I'm sure that the PD would have set up a camera and we could watch what's going on. I'm asking that you don't. First of all, I ask how much money is in this fund, and nobody can seem to tell me that. That's number one. Number two is. I just don't want you guys to keep raising our fees. It's just, we're not an endless pot money that you can draw from. It needs to stop.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Gerardo, uh, Gonzo- Gonzalo Gerardo?
Buenas noches, I'm just kidding. Uh, good afternoon, um. And I say that because you guys know that I used to be the chief of police at Callexico, so we always, can I have an, an extra minute and a half? I'm just kidding. I like to joke around because I'm retired now and I can afford to, um, on, on some, like, some of you guys that have to work. Oh, well, uh, if I work, it's because I do for fun, but I do walk, uh, believe it or not, uh. Like, at least five times a week. And I do walk towards those paths and I thank them before because I do see areas that are kept, you know, well, but some areas, I actually go around and I'm the type of person, and Mr. Dale knows me, Robert knows me. I, I have, uh, ADHD, I have some compulsive behavior, if I see trash, I pick it up. Um, and I'll throw it in the trash can. I see weeds, I pull them out and I leave them to the side. So, when I walk, uh, off of Morning Glory, coming north, uh, southbound from the dog park, and you have that raised, uh, concrete there with, with the landscaping. Sometimes I pull out the weeds there, and I say, people probably look at me and say, man, look, this guy's nuts. But it really bothers me to see that stuff. As I was talking to Mr. Breland and, and David over there. He says, you know, why are you doing that? I said, why do it? Because I care for my community. One thing that I did see in the City of Callexico in my many years living there, working there, was that we went from having a lot of people in the, in the parks and they can maintain it, to going private, to trying to go back to maintaining it with our staff. Anybody in business knows that it's a lot more expensive to have staff to do this all the time. I'm not saying you get rid of parks, I'm saying is, at one point, you're gonna have to say, what's better for us? Desert landscaping, um, hire contractor to come and do Sky Ranch while that can, they can do other parts of the city. Um, don't stretch them out also, because you're gonna burn them out. I'm not here to say, don't take my money. Take the money. Just make it nice. I, I, I tell people I live at Sky Ranch because I think it's probably the best neighborhood in Imperial. Um, because of the people that live there, we really care about our neighborhood. I'm not saying nobody else does, but, but we're the best. And, and we really care for our neighborhood, and I make phone calls. I've, I've called Robert before reporting beehives in the past, and they taking care of that situation. I call Mr. David Dale, uh, when I found out he's working for the city regarding the stop signs over there at Ayton and Austin. He went and put that, and I'm saving myself for, for the chief here, but I'm gonna be going over there to his office all the time because I see a lot of stuff that needs improvement. But I'm not gonna air it out here. I'm gonna go to the chief because as a chief, we have respect for each other, and I'm not gonna bash him. Um, but. You gotta do something for us, and don't just get the money, hold it there and just blow it. Uh, maybe, like I said, maybe invest it, desert landscaping in some areas. Boop, minute and a half. Uh, just like I said, please. This, this, before we go out spending, let's come back and maybe, you know, get together with us and maybe we can come up with a, with a solution that's gonna be low maintenance, that way you can free up your staff. Alright?
Appreciate it.
And good job what you're doing, man. A hundred percent behind you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Any other public comments? Absolutely.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, so first, I'll just say thank you for meeting with me and everyone else that's been kinda hearing me around this item. Um, everyone's been very attentive to kind of the concerns, but, um, I just wanna kinda take the opportunity to reinforce the reality of the situation that exists within Sky Ranch at the moment. So, you know, it's kind of a broken record, some of you have already heard me say it, but I just wanna reinforce that, you know, the city collects those dollars and those dollars, once you take action on this item, are restricted. They're restricted to be used within the boundaries of that district. It's not a CFD, it's an LLMD. And that LLMD is, uh, regulated by a, a different statute altogether as it pertains to CFDs and special districts and funding. And so, that's the kind of, um, angle that I'm looking at it from. I agree with the neighbors, you know, Sky Ranch is awesome, we have great, a great neighborhood. Everyone takes care of all their, you know, their front yards, and I would like to think that because we all kinda put in on that fund, uh, to the tune of about two hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year, that we can have nice landscaping in and around the community that, um, you know, that we pay for. And so, that's the big thing that kind of I'm reinforcing, um, consistently with you all is that it's paid for. Um, a- as Charlo said, you know, if it needs to be, uh, developed to be something different than what it is now, then let's do it because the money's there. I mean, two hundred and thirty thousand dollars a year is not a small piece of change. Um, that's tech, nineteen thousand dollars a month. Uh, forty-three dollars a month per household, there's four hundred and forty-nine homes in there. And so, you're, you know, the folks are chipping in, and it's a regulated use, and so that's kind of where, where my frustration has come from, as you've heard. Um, it just hasn't improved, and that's, that's a challenge when you consider, uh, you know, the, the amount of money that is collected. And if, but we're a CFD, I don't think we'd have any grounds to kind of come in here and ask that certain things be taken care of because when you do take action, all those items are outlined in the report as to what you should be expending the money on, and I know there are some challenges in there and there have been expenses on other things that, uh, tie into the LLMD and that are eligible and whatnot, but, um, you know, I don't think it would take too much to just maintain the landscaping, and I think everybody would be happy, um, and kind of contained there. So, you know, a- as Charlo mentioned and as Rick mentioned, I think we're available to discuss this on an ongoing basis, and I think what we wanna see is progress, and I think it's definitely fair, and I appreciate everybody engaging and listening to what it is that we, we're bringing to the table on that, and, and we're happy to support the city on everything else as well, you know, there's a lot going on, everybody's busy and, um, uh, appreciate the time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Excuse me, can I please get your name?
Oh, David Salgado, Sky Ranch.
Thank you.
Thank you, David. And so, to add to on top of this, we did have a, a meeting yesterday in regards to Sky Ranch. There were several of us that met. It was, uh, our city manager, Marina, uh, Parks and Rec, uh, Director, uh, Tony Lopez, our finance director, uh, Victor, and Ms. Obeso Martinez and myself met in regards to s- the Sky Ranch issues that we're, that are being addressed today. And I think, um, Mr. Salgado, and you can probably attest to this, that we came up to with something of sizable agreement that we can hopefully try to take care of and, and move forward from here. And, you know, the, the plan to try to meet with you, uh, on a more regular basis to make sure that it is being done. I think that, uh, it'll be a big, big step to, to what you guys are looking for. If we can get that done, you know, I'm, I'm, I'm really hopeful. And I think Mr. Lopez is, is thinks we can meet those goals, so, um. But the conversation was, I think, very good, and we met for what, about an hour and a half yesterday? So, I, like I said, I think the outcomes were, was favorable, so. And I think we can definitely move forward on this. So, Ms. Martinez, anything?
No, I was happy to hear what the residents had said. Having been a former resident of Sky Ranch, it's a great neighborhood, always wanna keep it up, and, um, I look forward to working with all of you in the future as far as your expectations, and I wanna hear you guys out. I wanna know what's going on. We can drive through there, we, we kids bike through there, but we also need to know from the residents who live there.
Um, I really just wanna add, you know, thank you guys for coming to our council meeting and letting us know these concerns because unport- you know, us as council members can't be everywhere, and so we really do rely on our constituents to be our eyes and ears and let us know what's going on in the communities and voicing your concerns, and that's what we're here for, so we'll make sure that we start taking, getting this care of. I apologize for your landscape not being up to par. Um, I particularly am very particular about that type of stuff, so I definitely understand your concerns.
Ms. Mendoza?
Um, just thank you to Mr. Uh, Mr. Mayor and the city manager and staff that met with the residents. I was glad to hear that there was a, a lengthy conversation that was held because this has been an ongoing problem, and I'm, I'm hopeful that there's, remains an open line of communication between the residents and Mr. Lopez and Marina and, and council. If not, please come back to council. If that, if that, uh, line of communication doesn't remain open, please make sure that you're making the council aware of that. Thank you.
Mr. Tucker?
No, I appreciate you guys coming out, and I just hope we ain't just giving you guys lip service and we get something done.
Yeah, and, and, um, Mr. Gonzalo Gerardo and, and Mr. Breland, uh, I too drove through there, looked at what you're, you're seeing. So, and that was addressed yesterday. So, um, just know that it, it is being heard, um, and like I said, after yesterday's meeting, I openly, um, we can definitely move forward on this, so. Appreciate you guys' concerns and bringing it up. Thank you. So, um, any other comments and questions?
There we go again.
Now, but somebody's coughing for you.
So, with that, I see no other comments. I'm gonna close this public hearing at seven forty-two. With that, I'll stand by and entertain.
I'll make a motion to approve, and I hope we do a, I know we'll do a better job. Thank you.
Got a motion?
I'll second the motion.
Got a motion in a second, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Appreciate it. Thank you. Thank you, guys. So, with that, we'll, uh, move on to item D one, appointment of one scheduled vacancy to the library board of trustees. And that is, sorry.
Mr. Marina.
Mr. Marina.
And that you reappoint her.
Okay. Thank you. Any questions from the council?
I'll make a motion to reappoint her to the board.
Second.
Motion in a second, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item D two, the declaring certain damage and obsolete library item surplus.
Uh, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I'm gonna give you a little history behind, um, the storage for the city library. It's been fun, um, I've really enjoyed looking back at the history and, and, and our original Carnegie, um, library, um, when it was built in nineteen ten, and unfortunately, um, was ruined in the forties with the earthquake. But in, um, nineteen fifty-three, our current library, um, was constructed and in twenty fifteen, um, was renovated, and no storage was ever placed in the library. Um, however, in nineteen fifty-five, the porch that was on the south end of the library, they covered that porch to create a small, uh, storage unit. And that storage unit, uh, or that storage room is a seven, seven by seventeen space, and so that has been housing, um, some very old items. And, uh, a lot of those items were moved in October of twenty-two, two thousand twenty-two to a ten by twenty, uh, unit. Um, and, um, so there were some concerns about the unit, so, um, staff and I went out there and, um, saw quite a bit of old items that can be declared as surplus to be either destroyed or there's some paintings that if we can find family members, uh, whose, um, members have donated those, that would be amazing to, um, provide those to them. Um, actually found a, um, it's like a still print of Imperial Merchant Brawley Softball, um, um, club, where the Imperial team in nineteen forty-nine won, and it lists all the people's names. So, um, we found some treasures, um, and then we found some other things that need to go away. So, um, so we can move out of that space because that space is, um, not very, not very clean. Uh, we, um, I, we finally were able to get another location, uh, that is a ten by ten, uh, that is climate controlled. And so, we've moved most of our equipment that is used monthly or annually, um, in nice storage containers, um, in, on, on, um, um, stor- stored shelves, and we're still working on that. So, I'm asking, um, I, I provided a list of items, um, for it to declare as surplus to either be, um, destroyed, um, sold, or provided back to the owners, um, previous owners. And then we also, what I did not include is in twenty twenty, um, we, uh, they, we have, we had a very old bathroom that was no longer usable, along with a kitchenette, which provided us another small space of a seven by, um, eleven by seventeen. Um, and that was a quarantine room in twenty twenty. So, we're turning that over into a storage room where we can keep our daily and weekly materials in. So, um, we're finding storage solutions, um, but, um, I'll probably be coming back to you weekly, alright, or by, uh, twice a month, um, as we, uh, go through the files from nineteen sixty to current, um, current, uh, to declare as, um, for retention and for destroy, um, destruction, and then, um, additional items that, um, we need to declare a surplus. So, um, it's, um, my request is that, uh, the council approves our, um, declaration of surplus items that were listed before you. And I'll stand for any questions.
Any questions? I, I just have one question. What the retention, do we just get rid of it, or do we digitize it before we get rid of it, or?
With, with our new retention policy, we do try, if, there are required mandatory documents. Those are either stored under a very secure electronic version, um, at, that has backup and double backup. If it is something that is obsolete and not required to be held, for instance, a, a simple example is all the paperwork tied to a grant. A a simple example is all the paperwork tied to a grant. We retain those for seven years and then after that, we do destroy rather than saving them. Right, right. So some some departments may keep more for historical reasons voluntarily, but. Uh, we have a list and each item is kind of handled a little bit differently, but for the most part, we're trying to go more digital. Um, but we we do destroy.
Thank you. Oh, so have we thought about donating some of these items that you might deem historical down to the museum?
If that is allowable, that would be wonderful, yes. And those, I'm currently what's identified, um, there is. I mean, that one photo I spoke of, um, I think that's something more than likely Imperial we'd like to display. But we will be coming across some historical items once um I go into the outdoor sh- storage unit outside of the library. I went in there um today and took some photos and so if that, I'll bring those to you um and request.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
What's the coolest thing you found?
Um, we actually, I mean, the right, the coolest thing is the blueprint of the Carnegie building. That um it's unfortunately, it's a little um torn apart, so we're hoping to just um put it together somehow. But it identifies a men's reading room, a women's reading room, a porch. Uh, so this was um in nineteen oh two, um, some ladies started a library with a hundred and two books, which they um worked with the school district on. And then um in nineteen oh nine, they started fundraising efforts where Carnegie donated ten thousand dollars to build the brick. Um, Carnegie Library and then it took, I think it was ended up being twelve or fifteen thousand dollars to complete that library. Which I wish we still had.
Right?
Uh, yeah, earthquakes hit Imperial pretty hard.
Yeah, there's a lot of Carnegie stuff here in the valley.
Yes, yeah.
Put a lot of money into the valley.
I definitely wanna do something with that blueprint.
Yes, that's very cool.
Thank you for asking.
No worries. Oh, I'm a nerd like that. Um, but I'll make the motion uh to approve library items as surplus and authorize staff to sell and dispose. Second.
Got a motion and a second, please vote.
Motion carries five zero. Thank you.
Moving on to item D three, the agreement between the City of Imperial and Tyler Technologies. For implementation of enterprise resource planning, the ERP software and the uh software as a service and that Mr. Estrada.
Uh, between the City of Imperial and Tyler Technology for an ERP uh software as a service. And the real amount is two hundred, two hundred and seventy-six thousand, five hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. However, we are considering uh twenty-two thousand, four hundred and eighty-five dollars um for a total of three thousand. Three hu- three hundred thousand dollars uh for the implementation. And I present this item last council meeting and I was up for any question that you may have. Uh, open, sorry, it's the council item uh shows the how it's gonna be paid. The counts and the amounts. But I was up for any question that you may have.
Any questions?
Make a motion to approve um the implementation of enterprise resource planning ERP software as a service, as a service.
Hey, got a motion?
Second.
Second, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Moving on to item D four, establishing classification salary ranges and job descriptions for the positions of accountant. Building official, cybersecurity administrator, fleet and facilities supervisor, and adopting revisions to the public service manager job description.
Mr. Mayor, uh, and and council, uh, the the four positions uh that you mentioned are uh. I- i- in my view, directly related to the growth that the city has experienced and 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 developed a need. Uh, for these positions, uh, I think staff is here if you have some specific questions with respect to uh. The positions, but I believe the the explanation in the backup uh uh de- describes. Uh, uh, the need for the for the positions. You you'll notice in the uh fiscal impact, there is an amount. Uh, that of uh that these positions uh ha- have been included in the uh budget for. In the amount of uh four hundred fifty-seven thousand dollars. Now, obviously, you haven't yet adopted the budget. One approach to this would be to put this over. Uh, 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 to until the time that the budget is adopted. It's anticipated that budget adoption will occur at your first meeting in July. Uh, and if that's the council's preference, uh, we we can, we can put this on uh for action. At that time as part of the budget adoption. In the meantime, if you have any questions about the positions. Uh, I'll be happy to uh answer as best I can and then s- staff can fill in any gaps in that.
Thank you. Any questions?
Um, as we do not have a set budget yet, I would like to table this item until. A future meeting so that we can get more of an idea on the budget and come to consensus on that before we decide on adding new positions. And see how that will come into play.
That that certainly works later on in your agenda. You're gonna be hearing about the budget. Uh, uh, and and uh this, like, as indicated, this amount is included, but that's certainly. An acceptable way to proceed uh to provide you the comfort level that uh our budget uh can uh. Take care of of these these new positions.
And I think definitely with there, there's a couple of them that we definitely wouldn't want more information on. Uh, so we can cover that at a later time when we bring it back too, so um.
So my motion is to pull this item from the agenda until we can come back to it at a later date with more information.
I'll second.
Okay, a motion and a second to table this item till a later date? How do we, do we take that to a vote to table it or what do we just leave it alone?
You know, that's fine. If there's a motion and second, uh, you can take action and and we'll and we'll bring it back. Uh, I I would anticipate we would bring it back as part of the budget adoption.
Okay.
Now, is the second item number two, is that completely separate? Is that for an existing position or is that new? Cause there's two parts to this item.
Yeah, that is a separate item. As you know, you you currently have a public services manager position. Uh, that has been unfilled, uh, and and that that that's an, you raise an excellent point. Our our intention was to uh begin recruitment uh for that position and and backing up a bit. Uh, a- a- as you all know, Mr. Dale and Mr. Manriquez have have been on uh came on relatively recently. They have uh had an opportunity to assess their departments. Uh, and 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 that's uh a a a significant part of where. Like in Mr. Manriquez's uh situation where the accountant position comes uh for public services. Uh, Mr. Dale has determined that he would like to fill this position. But in looking at the uh the job description we now have in place. It ha- it has some things uh contained in there that that uh. Uh, we don't, I think, are appropriate, given the direction that we think this position uh will uh uh we want to go. Uh, and by the same token, there are things that we we're gonna expect of this position that we wanna add. So certainly, the uh we uh aside from item number one, uh, we uh. If you see fit, we would ask that you go forward with item to number uh two, uh, and then we would commence. Uh, recruitment of the position uh on that basis.
Ms. Obessa Martinez, uh, you made the motion to table the uh D four. Was that items one and two or just item one?
That would be on tabling item one alone.
And moving forward with.
Moving forward with approval and adopta revisions to the existing job description for the public services manager to still continue.
That was my second.
Mr. Are we clear, we clear with that?
Yeah, you're good.
Okay, so uh, the motion was to table item one, move forward with item two. We got a motion and a second, please vote.
And for the record, that wasn't me that caught that, that was the city clerk.
Thank you.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. Moving on to item D five, fiscal year twenty twenty-two operations Stone Garden Grant Program Memorandum of Understanding. And that's a chief reel. Of operations for the operations. Awesome. Glad to, glad to see our money is going up for Stone Garden.
Yeah.
To what they were back in twenty sixteen, that was not a lot. Definitely not, they weren't buying units.
No, actually, uh, we were surprised because they initially had told us no, and then when they returned the MOU, it was approved, so. We had a mild party and celebration.
Thanks for the invite. So, thank you. Um, with that, we'll uh. Any questions? Okay, got a motion for Mr. Tucker?
Second.
Second by Ms. Obessa Martinez, please vote.
That was Ms. Katie.
Burnworth, I'm sorry. I'm trying. I'm getting the feedback.
Motion carries five zero.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item D six, replacement of granulated activated carbon filter media.
We have, the city has budgeted four hundred thousand dollars uh to replace the GAC media filter. The the granulated activated carbon media is is not backwash. You can't backwash it. It has to be replaced. When it gets old enough and we have estimated every six months that it be replaced. So we had four units and now with this new project coming online in July, we think we will have eight. So it costs about a hundred thousand dollars to replace for four units and two hundred thousand for all eight. And if we have to do that, obviously, twice a year, that would be four hundred thousand. Um, thankfully, this council approved the mixers that we that you approved last meeting and we think that that could. Probably reduce, we could reduce the flows. We're gonna experiment of reducing flows through the GACs, therefore extending the GAC media filter. Possibly a media for at least a ye- one year replacement. Um, we we think we can do that. Um, based on the mixers and some other technology that was approved, so for now, we do need to replace at least four of the units. GAC and it's a hundred thousand dollars more or less. And um that the contractor is responsible for installing the G- the media filter for the new four filters. So for now, we would have um all new media filter if this um would filter media if this was, if this is approved tonight. But we are gonna experiment to try to extend the GAC filter media, but we'll see.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Any questions? Comments, concern?
I'll make the motion to approve the ninety, the amount of ninety-six thousand.
Got a motion for Mr. Tucker?
I'll second it.
Second by Ms. Doza, please vote.
Motion carries five zero.
Moving on to item D seven, review of the fiscal year twenty twenty-five city budget. And doc resolution uh twenty twenty-four dash forty-six continuing continuing appropriations that provide spending authority. For fiscal year twenty-four and twenty-five.
Uh, Mayor, Council, good evening. Um, this is um. To bring forth the budget presentation before you vote on it, uh, there's a presentation for upcoming. Uh, twenty twenty-four budget. Um, joining us online is uh Mr. Herrera as well. Um, who has been um who's our consultant and helping out with the aside transition. Um, so before you vote, uh, I do wanna say we are balanced, so. It's it's a good presentation, so we can uh start with this. Feel free to interrupt in any time, any questions. You do have the presentation and the actual. Need and greedy detail for all departments, all funds, right there, it's your backup, so. Uh, if you wanna point out a question or account, uh, I make uh I try to answer as best I can. If not, I know department heads can help me out. Uh, so that will start um for tonight, there's a. So for tonight, we had two actions, one budget for twenty twenty-five. First actions to review the twenty twenty-five budget. Um, uh, all requests, all funds for all city departments, uh, final proposed budget will come later adoption in July. Either the first or second meeting in July. Uh, tonight budgets will review the provided for each city department, uh, especially the general fund departments. Action two, um, I am asking for um authorization um. Based on the twenty-four, twenty-five base budget, based on the twenty-four budget. So council approval resolution for twenty twenty-four forty-six is need to provide spending authority for new fiscal year that begins July first. Otherwise, we can't go uh doing business as is without an approved uh budget. Uh, next slide. Here is a overview of the last three fiscal years and upcoming fiscal year. As you can see, one thing I do wanna point out for fiscal year twenty twenty-two, you can see audited under actual. So we received our twenty-two audit yesterday, so uh those are final numbers and uh reconciled numbers. Through our external auditor. Uh, for upcoming fiscal year, uh. The changes you see is uh the budget. Uh, you can compare budget for twenty-four currently. And the projected actually, um. Current projections for this uh upcoming, this current fiscal year. We have a total expenditures of uh fourteen million, three, four fourteen point three million. And that's a projected. Uh, we're currently said about thirteen point one. So we still have the rest of the month and July and August to cut off any invoices that we have not received. So we are expecting and projecting around a fourteen point three million expenditures total for general fund. Uh, on the revenue side, uh, it's a conservative revenue. Um, based on um Q two and Q three updates that we have presented in the past. Uh, conservative, I said, um, we projected it's probably be over eleven, eleven point one. But um I'd rather be conservative and not have to come back to council and say, oh, oh, or. Rather deliver good news. So with that, we're projecting net revenue of um one point four. If uh expenditures come less or revenue comes more, then that could go up and down, but that's our. Projection for the final year for fiscal twenty twenty-four. So based on that, um. During the cus- uh past couple of months, we were meeting with department heads, uh, based on their um. Current or future plans or any projects they have currently, they need to be ongoing, new projects. So with that, um, our expenditures do rise um from the budget, so but a unique. You only need to compare budget to budget net actuals, um, which is need to um be prepared in case those projects do come. All hundred percent. Currently, um, the proposed budget draft right now, we're having at. Excuse me, seventeen million, uh, seventeen point four million for expenditures. And expected revenue of seventeen point six. So that would bring us a net revenue of one uh one hundred and seventy-six thousand. If all goes according to plan, a hundred percent expenses and revenues to come in.
Do you have a, like a real quick synopsis of why the um expenditures are going up?
Expenditures are are salaries. Uh, this uh and like Mr. Marita said, the new positions already budgeted. So that's something that we put the fourth foot of the carriage or vice versa. So that's uh four hundred fifty-seven thousand right off the top. Uh, we'll see considering the new, the second MOU, uh, the second year of. Uh, we'll see considering the new, the second MOU, uh, the second year of the MOU, so which increases. We have twenty-six new staff people, including myself, that came in since July first. New employees. So that's mainly mainly salaries.
Those weren't budgeted in the previous year, though? The, some of the ones that came in now?
Not, uh, to my knowledge, not all of them or a hundred percent.
Like your position, it was budgeted before, wasn't it?
Uh, not at a hundred percent. So budget-wise, uh, I don't have that breakdown detail which ones were, which one weren't, went, but, uh, the new positions aren't there. The MOU is consideration. Um, vacancies are considered there. Uh, we do have some different projects, um, and small departmental increases, not a whole lot. But, uh, it's mainly, uh, the salaries from the budget to budget.
Cause it's like a three million increase size.
Uh, not necessarily if you compare it to last year's budget. So if you compare it to last year's budget, it's sixteen point seven, the but the actual budget.
But you're showing a projection of fourteen point three.
Correct. To actual, yes, but that's comparing actual to budget. That's.
Are you two million dollars, like, two million dollars under budget?
Not under budget, but basically budget that we didn't spend.
Yeah.
You want to have a budget about salary savings or budget savings, uh, projects that, uh, that weren't completed. But if we if we're comparing budget to budgets, it's only increasing, uh, not only, I don't wanna say only, but nine hundred and fifty thousand.
Excuse me, Victor?
Yes.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can, Joe.
Uh, I I just wanted to make a comment, uh, regarding the the good questions the council members are asking. The 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 very important point at the City of Imperial is that there's a difference, obviously, between the the, um, the amount of of program work, the goals and objectives, the projects that the city council wants to see brought to fruition, the amount of operating, um, uh, demands for services. But we've only had this much capacity. We have the money to do, we've had the money to do this much. There's a demand for services for this much, but our capacity to complete projects, which we'll look at that another another slide. Um, slide six and seven, which Victor will go into, it'll tell you department by department what the budget increase is. That doesn't mean we're gonna spend it. We see a seventeen million, four hundred twenty-eight thousand dollar expenditure budget for next fiscal year. We're not gonna spend it. We're gonna have a significant amount that's gonna be unspent, but they're just trying to plan. This is what we want to accomplish, but as many small cities, they, because not, they don't have the people, they 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 don't have the capacity to complete capital projects. We have a thirteen million dollar CIP budget. It's not getting done because we haven't had the people consistently there to make traction. And then second, the same thing with the operating budget. So my point is that, you're right, it looks like we're going up three million dollars, but that's because we're comparing actuals projected for twenty twenty-four and comparing that with a budgetary number for twenty twenty-five. I mean, it'd be nice if we can get everything done, um, but we haven't had the capacity in the past. And I think the goal is to achieve a higher level of capacity, so that's why it looks like such a big step of value in the budget.
Thank you, John.
Any other questions on this slide?
Not on this.
Okay.
No worries.
So this is, uh, summary changes. Next slide is is basically, uh, how we're projecting the twenty-four, like I mentioned, where, um, the expenditures and the difference with the budget next year. And there's the breakdown of the, uh, the revenue increase, uh, transfers, funding and the expenditures. So you see the three million dollar there because we're comparing the actuals to to the actual budgeted. And like I said, if all projects and all that come to fruition, we are gonna be around the seventy million. But like this year, the budget was, um, was sixteen point seven for this year, so we're closer to the fourteen, so none of all the projects are, didn't happen for some reason or the other. That's, that will be the difference. We'll go on, we'll we'll get to the department and we'll can see the actual change in the departments and, um, little bit more specific to each specific department, um, why it changed. Main goals for, the main points for the upcoming budget, um, based on meetings, uh, with all department heads, uh, for their operational needs, um, everything would be funded, funded as requested. If perfect role, if everything comes to, uh, all the plans come together, um, they're funded for. Like mentioned previously, um, the four FD that we put on hold are included already in that number. So we wouldn't see an increase again when we come back to council for those positions. Or either that number will get, uh, reduced if denied, so. It also includes the second year of the MOU for labor negotiations. You can see also as one of the attachments, uh, detailed position control worksheet for all positions, recommendations, uh, vacancies and new positions. Currently, one point two million funding transferred from excess balances from the vehicle and risk managers that were established, uh, last fiscal year, or current fiscal year. One thing I do wanna point out is number six. We are waiting, uh, we recently are completing a class and comp study. We've been through the interviews, we, I know we have some, uh, job description revisions and all that, uh, but we wouldn't get the final impact until October, I imagine. I think that's the the date Krista mentioned. So that may well very much impact our budget. So until we know that, that's something we do need to consider. That's coming out, uh, upcoming fiscal year. Plus, we'll keep going on, uh, quarterly revisions, so.
So let me ask you a question. If it comes in October, we're just gonna take whatever excess we have out of general fund if we decide to do it, right? Cause it's not a budgeted item.
That it would need to be going through you guys, uh, to decide, uh, the action on that study.
Would it go into be adopted or have to go through the, um, the bargaining units?
It it would go to bargaining units first.
Yeah, has to go through the.
It has to be adopted. So that's a whole separates, but the the study is gonna come regardless on October, November. I don't know exactly.
You should think of the class and comp as a tool.
Yeah.
We we have, we have a three-year, uh, MOU with our with our bargaining units. The 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 timing of the class and comp is i- is what it is, but, uh, and it'll be a tool that we can use going forward. So, but you shouldn't look at it as something that's carved in stone that
That gets implemented.
that you have, that is, uh, going to be, uh, implemented.
Alright. So moving forward, um, these are some of the slides John mentioned earlier. This is, uh, breakdown, uh, for all departments on our general, um, fund. You can see, um, same same thing, the fiscal year twenty-two, twenty-three. On the actual, it's actual, those are actual numbers that, uh, once the report was ran, um, earlier this month, where we're where we're sitting, the budget that was, uh, requested for last, uh, for current fiscal year and the budget requested, being requested for upcoming fiscal year.
Can I ask a question real quick?
Yes.
Looking at our city manager and she's down by the, oh, yeah. City attorney, not calling you girl Dennis, sorry. But it's down by thirty-three percent. As far as I know, we haven't re-evaluated her contract.
It's, uh, just, um, sales budgeting for her actual contract. Um, I think it was overstated last year by, uh, forty thousand, the budget, not her contract, but the actual budget side of it.
Yeah, and I, I need to check with risk management. So my contract has been consistent, which is eight thousand dollars a month.
Correct.
But when there's additional council that's hired, um, which can be a significant additional expense if not paid through the JPIA. So I need to see if that's considering the risk management, um, budget for outside council or that needs to be added back. I would consider to to think about that with the city manager, maybe.
Well, yeah, but for now, for budget, but it's just, it would be just, uh, city attorneys. I know we JPIAs in here, um, and we have the risks as well, so.
Do we know why such also drastic change in our city clerk?
City clerk, uh, because of the temp that we had previously.
Oh, yeah.
Oh.
Which is no longer considered.
Yes. Gotcha.
And, um, I'll just, um, highlight the ones that have the big change. Um, we already have city clerk, city attorney. Admin services is considering the one position already in that, uh, budget. Human resources, that's a major one. So how general liability was, uh, budgeted for this year, everything ran through human resources department, so general fund. So for upcoming year, uh, general liability is being distributed where it should go based on the liability. So that's why, um, it goes down that much.
Why is our code enforcement up seventy-six percent?
Code enforcement, uh, currently for current fiscal year, there's only one person budgeted there.
They have two.
We have two. Uh, the other person was under another, in one of the other departments, so we are making those corrections as well. Plus, the part-time organic waste went to full-time, so that's an additional, so, but we have two people there for our current fiscal year.
Are we paying the full-time salary of the organic waste or was that coming through, uh, IVRMA was paying that?
That was already made.
I thought they were being, it was grant funded for us.
Yes, there's a portion. Oh, no, I I misunderstood the question, sorry.
Yeah.
I I I I thought it was like from part-time to full-time, uh.
But they're still paying the one side and we're paying the other side.
Correct. It it there is a portion through a grant, correct.
And we thought, how long was the grant for?
Uh, we need to get back on you there.
Every year, uh, I think we allocated like twenty, twenty-two thousand for this fiscal year.
Out of general plan? No, from the grant, from the grant. It's twenty thousand. Yes.
And how long does that grant for?
It's it's every year we're gonna be applying for that, so, uh, hopefully we get it every year.
If not, the hit would be the twenty thousand. What else is there? Um, engineering is remaining, so so the difference is it's getting people in the right department to what was, uh, projected. Storm drains, um. That's another one.
Can you advance the slide, Victor?
Oh, sorry. We moved next slide. So, um, then we continue from the departments, uh, going off the list, um, storm drains, uh. I think that's coming up as a CIP budget, uh. So there's no really the operating cost on the day-to-day, so that's probably only come up when we present the CIP budget as well.
When will CIP budget be presented?
Uh, hopefully with the budget. Next week, no, next council.
Okay, thank you.
It's already. Already have it, so. So I just need present it when we come to the budget. So it's all nice by fiscal year, uh, I really kinda met with department heads and pressured them to see which project they are actually gonna complete this upcoming year, so we can, uh, take care of the revenue side of it. Uh, other than being just a wish list that, uh, that will be there, it's just actually getting departments completed, uh, the part, uh, projects completed. The other big increase right there on this screen is, uh, building safety, which is include, which is including the one officer, uh, for the new per, new position. Recreation, you see a big jump because it was divided into two different different departments, so that's now gonna come as one single department. Uh, and that's why you see, uh, zero for pool programs.
So what's the difference between parks and recreation and recreation and aquatics program and then pool programs?
Uh, recreation aquatics is, uh, your lifeguards, your summer recreation programs, all your parks and stuff.
Okay.
And I know that they do have some plans for, um, upcoming fiscal year. So, and it's merging with the actual pool program. So it's just gonna be one, next year will, you will only see one.
So is that why it doesn't?
That's why you see actual money, some pool programs, but zero for budget?
Yeah.
It's already included in recreation and aquatics program.
Okay.
I can explain that a little better. So what we did last year as part of the budget, as part of the budgeting process, we we had several different accounts, um, under, you know, that we just merged into one. So before we had a recreation division and we had an aquatics division, so we just merged uh, those two to be one, so that we can, uh, have less line items to keep track of during the budgeting process. So we, all accounts from what was recreation separate from aquatics has now become one division under Parks and Recreation. So we have special events division. We have aquatics and recreation, which are our pool programs, our summer camps. Hopefully, uh, next fiscal year, we we hope to extend those, uh, if we get some additional space through the senior apartments to have, uh, in in, uh, indoor activities to run year-round. Um, so that'll be a next year thing once we figure that out, but that's the reason you see that as one and then you see a zero on the other.
Thank you. That explains it. Thank you.
Alright, moving on, uh. This is, uh, um, previously mentioned, the preparative budget funds. Any activity of the city is supported through fees like enterprise funds, the internal severance funds allocation. Should have started as fun as for twenty twenty-five. And this was, this was already established this current fiscal year, which is changing, uh, the amounts needed. The Imperial, the IT will keep it at one million for any future investments, uh, which are separate from the IT budget, which is growing a lot as well. Second, risk management will be set at seven fifty for twenty twenty-five. And vehicle replacement, I I do wanna apologize, I do have a typo there, it's at nine hundred and fifty thousand instead of the one point million.
And what department's that for?
That's for the vehicle replacement fund. It's not, it's general fund vehicles, which we currently don't project to change any vehicles.
So I thought we with vehicle replacement, I thought we went with enterprise. That was gonna cost us less money, not, you know, a million dollars.
That fund is just a reserve in case we have any needs.
Oh, this is a reserve, not what we're paying.
Yeah, this is, this is our reserves money, so in case of any need for any future says. Currently, we do have enterprise, but we only have about nine vehicles to enterprise. There, the others, uh, we own. So, um, I know we met with enterprise a couple of months ago, but that will be the consensus. We meet up with city manager and and staff to see the future needs. So that that's something that will come up.
Yeah, I think they were gonna cycle through. Remember, we owned ones and as they cycled, we'd go through the enterprise.
The old ones and now, so currently for upcoming budget, except for, I know public works has something that were already projected for this, uh, but not public works, uh. Public works? Public services, sorry. A couple of pickups and, uh, I know police had one for replacement. So that's about it for for vehicles.
And I hate to bring up the the elephant in the room, but is any of this that we're going to electric? Cause I know that we're we have to end the future plan on.
Correct, and and that's something that, uh, based on the fleet and the size, we have to go electric by twenty thirty-five, I think. That hasn't been discussed.
We're gonna get chargers first.
Gotta get power first.
Gotta get power for the charger first.
Part of their, part, I will tell you, I was on a call, Stacy, where part of the presentation was there watching to make sure whatever the law is, that they present that to your city to make sure we're in compliance, cause it changes often.
So that, uh, was discussed through enterprise, so as they manage the. So that uh was discussed through enterprise, so as they managed, they would. Uh, advise on vehicles that do need to get replaced and all that, so. We do have a like uh contact or I don't, I wanna say consultant because we don't pay, uh, except for the cars we are leasing. Moving on, um. Like I previously mentioned, this is the current C I P budgets that we are carrying over. Um, when I come forward with the actual budget and all that, you'll see. Different layout uh by fiscal year, uh, not necessarily just the total. And uh, so we have it, um, or we already designed it by fiscal year, uh, realistic fiscal year. And revenue sourcing, so it will give you a breakdown where we intend to pull the revenues from. This is just like what we're carrying over that was already approved current fiscal year. Uh, next. Um, our current, um, bond balances reserve, uh. For the general fund stand at four point seven million, which would be a twenty-seven percent, uh. From uh the proposed budget. Um, which is the seventeen million. For water, uh, we have uh three point three million working capital and six million in um capacity fees and and reserves. Uh, for wastewater, we have eleven point seven million and for working pa- capital, one point eight million. The remaining special funds have a twenty-three point nine million in fund reserves. Uh, altogether, we have uh fifty-one, close to fifty-one million, which currently sit uh. At life accounts and uh well-sargo investment. Um, I have been meeting with uh other sources, uh, to diversi- uh diversify uh securities. Local banks, uh, to see what is the best option for the city. And I'm still pending from, to hear from one more, to see any differences for the future. For short-term, they have thirty days, sixty, up to five years, so we currently have a quarterly system and a monthly and a quarterly. So it would be um based on need or C I P projects, uh, where we put our money in. Um, next, um, this more informational, uh, gas spending limit, um, the city spending limit for twenty-four was at twenty-one million. Twenty-five, twenty-one point five million. The revised spending limit for twenty-five increases to twenty-two point eight million, based on the factors from the state of permanent finance, um. According to them, the population increased two point, two point fifty-nine percent and inflation increased three point six-two percent.
I like the way you said that, according to them. Wish my stuff went up three percent.
We have to go by those numbers, so that's why I say, according to them, that's the numbers we need to follow. Uh, so the appropriation, uh, that we are uh obligated to, it's only uh nine million. And we're way below it, so this shouldn't be an issue, uh, with the upcoming budget. Um, next line conclusion, um. Even though it's the original budget, we'll keep um doing budget re- year-round with the quarterly reports. Here's a ten on a schedule of the future, um, quarterly reports for Q one, October, Q two, January. Q three, April and Q four, which would be the final year, uh, September. And that would conclude the presentation, um, I know it's a lot to throw you, throw you at. One council, just this is high level. Um, but um, I would welcome any suggestions for future budgets, uh, how do you wanna see it presented? Timeliness, uh, detail. So you have all the backup, any specific questions you may have for any account? Specific line item, department. Uh, feel free, and I probably could answer if not, like.
I think I would like to see it more like kinda broken down into the different departments to kinda see. You know, well, you know, this is the director, this is the department they oversee, and these are like all the line items in their budget, like these are their expenses. We have some departments that generate revenues, um, you know.
And that is in your backup, but not as as the presentation, this is like, like I said, it's high level, but I could bring it up for when we present to council the the budget. I can uh surely work on that.
Maybe not like all the line, but you know what I mean, like what the revenues were. Yeah, kinda more summarized, like every department, that would be really helpful.
Yeah.
And kinda like the, you know, the overall, yeah, I mean.
So the summary of each department, uh, if they're generating any revenues and all that, so that was.
Yeah, and then if you could, could, you know, kinda compare to where they were at on last year's budget, so if they were over budget, if they were under budget. Kinda highlight that, that would be great.
Sure.
Thank you.
And then, I know one of the things that was asked, uh, Mr. Marita, that if we can have, I think last year. And the year before, we also had breakdowns of staff. How many staff members we had per department, what we're adding, what we're losing, what is being changed? Uh, if we're taking, you know, A and converting it to D or whatever it is.
I'd also like to know, you know, not only the positions, but how many of them are filled right now? And maybe like a five-year snapshot of how many each department has, how many positions each department has received over the last five.
I I I don't have the presentation, I didn't focus on on the H R side, but on um, there is an attachment on your um, on the agenda. That indicates exactly breakdown, position by position, the primary department, vacancies and new positions required.
Not, not in this pack.
Not in this packet, but in the actual agenda item, uh, on your, on on the agenda is one of the.
Page three hundred and eighteen, so.
It's a three-page, uh, this is H R and it's uh.
It's there, but it's way in the back.
It's itemized by position, fill position, open and uh. Currently only have six vacancies.
That's good. Yeah, I saw it ref, I figured it was in here somewhere, cause it was referenced as a worksheet, so.
So yeah, but but I could condense it based on the department, uh. I actually go, I am gonna work on a budget, uh, for to put it out with org charts, uh, project goals and all that, so so. That's coming, so I just right now, I want to get through the numbers and then work on the aesthetic side of the uh, of the budget.
So Dennis, I don't know if that would be something um, that you would, that Victor would be presenting or something we can get from Kristen. Like I said, I'd like to see maybe over the last five years, how many positions each department has gotten that they've, and you know, they've requested or been denied. Or what I before, cause we're being asked to consider. Again, over and over, I mean, I work in city government, I know it happens everywhere that you you need new staff, but I'd like to make sure of it. You know, I wanna know how many new positions they've gotten before we continue just.
Over the last uh, last five years?
Mr. Marita, last year, jog my memory, are you, everybody on council, did we have a? Like a meeting to go over the budget prior to it being?
Did, we had a budget workshop.
Is that something that we can bring back? This is a, I mean, I appreciate your guys' time and effort in this and we're still not at budget, right? We don't, we're just at the proposed for, um, but it's a lot to digest in one night and one session, right? Um, I personally would appreciate if we had a budget workshop to meet with the heads, see what their wants, needs, what they have budgeted for. Because this is a, a lot of moving parts and it's a huge city and a lot of um. Items that need to be thought for, taken care of and, you know, anticipated and. You can't do that, or I personally can't do that in a. You know, reading three hundred and eighteen pages, I would appreciate a budget workshop or something thereof to think about in the future in regards to this.
And particularly, you know, any, you know, like the the capital improvement projects in, uh, particularly. H R, so that we can have this discussion and get some kinda justification of why they're needing new staff and. Um, I think these decisions need to be made before you hand us a final budget for approval. And, cause to me, if I, if if they're handing me something and asking me to approve it, if if it doesn't get approved. And you're presenting it to us in a fi- you know, a final budget for approval, now you've gotta go back and you've gotta readjust everything. If if we can get that information ahead of time to make that, have that consideration and that discussion, I think it would help you. And when you prepare your final budget, that the, that information is considered, or that those decisions are considered.
Sure, um, do you want me to set up prior to bringing back the item? Uh, so we can discuss this, uh.
I'm gonna do a special meeting?
Special meeting, uh, set up, um.
Without violating a brown act.
I will be gone all next week.
Well, it would have to be.
Just for future, for next year, I would hope that these. Items are anticipated, thought about, and this is done prior to.
This is, sorry to interrupt, so this is just to continue the appropriations from last budget.
No, I agree, but it, in the future, this is what I would appreciate as a council member.
All timing wise, uh, of course.
We'll get back with the date. We'll work on trying to get a date.
Is that something, how long would you need to be able to prepare a budget workshop with your department, with the department heads? I don't wanna give, I personally wouldn't wanna give you guys an unrealistic, um.
Well, technically, um, I met individually with all of them. So we kinda discussed, I already know what was their projects, so like I said, uh, C I P projects are already uh in place to present. So didn't wanna bring in as well this one, um. Um, realistically, just get a couple of things like on the H R side, uh. But I know Kristen's out all this week, um. No more than two weeks probably, uh, or hopefully by next week. Because the numbers are there, the accounts are there, it's just if you wanna go department, department with department heads.
Yeah, I think, I think we kinda wanna make sure like the. Needs of our departments are met, so if like something was cut out that, you know. That they particularly need to, you know, if that makes sense, you know.
Yes, it does, and.
What they originally requested, what was cut out, that way we can kinda see. Not necessarily the whole process, but like a Snapchat or Snapchat. My daughter continuously asks for it and I continuously tell her no, so. But yeah, I mean.
Now it's just like putting it in a presentation. Um, because we have met uh more than once with each apartment, uh, city manager, so we're all aware of the needs. The projects, um. And I think, um, it was minimal like revisions, like you need to cut it here, cut it there, it's like realistically. When are these projects coming to fruition, grants and all that stuff, uh, so that's already been taken care of, it's more. Aesthetic wise, like I said, like I mentioned, it's presentation wise, how do you wanna see it, but I can have it, um. Probably in a week.
Mr. Marita, do you have any issues with that or?
Well, I don't have issues with with your request, uh, and nor nor the timing and I believe a. Uh, either adjourning this meeting, if we have a date, a specific date to go to, or we'll notice a special meeting in order to make. The information available to you.
That might just be the best thing to do is just do a special.
Can we do it like in a week and a half, who's here and who's not here?
What day are you looking at?
Uh, late next week. I will be gone all next week, but I could zoom in, if not the eighth or ninth of July.
Is the, what, when is the budget scheduled to come back to its approval, the third or the?
Third or seventeenth, it depends on what council decides.
But can we talk about what the impact of that is? So by law, starting July one, we have to have something in place. What we're doing today or proposing that you do is adopting basically status quo, so the. You could do it on the third, you could do it on the seventeenth, you could do it even later, but then you aren't able to, um. Process things like the raises or changes that were not in last year's budget, so. You realize the impact of doing it, obviously, all of the pay raises are backdated till July one, but. Um, you know, the longer you push it off, it just impacts, um, paying for for certain things going forward. The increases.
New, new things, correct?
That, because next year, I would expect this to be done before, way, well in advance.
Okay. That's not an issue.
We need a special meeting next week?
Next week?
Not to twenty-seventh, I can't do, but I can do Monday, Tuesday, Wednesday or Friday.
I have meetings on stage, we have I C T C and all those.
I ain't do any.
I need a twenty-seven.
With Thursday?
Yeah.
There's your meme. Twenty-seven or any other day?
I'm gonna do a Friday? Is Friday easier for you?
Yeah, I could, I just have to be out for like an hour. It doesn't matter, either Thursday or Friday is fine. Will we have a corn? Cause I'll, I have to zoom in as well, I'll be in San Diego all next week.
We can notice your location, um, for you to participate and we'll do that with the special notices. And so you'll have to be in a location that the public can access, but if we do follow the rules, I believe we could do it out, but.
If not, I can have my vice president be present for my other meeting. We're good.
You guys call.
Thursday it is.
Thursday time, five o'clock? Thursday five?
Twenty, yeah, twenty-seven.
Twenty-seventh to five.
So, when you get to the end of the meeting, you should just adjourn. Take a, uh, action to adjourn this meeting to June twenty-seventh at five P M.
Will it matter, the adjourning, Katie, if we're having to do the special notices for?
Can we vote on this motion?
Yeah, I I would certainly agree to that and then we'll sort out, it's it's within the five days. Give me one second, cause one where, yeah, cause you, I I don't think that that changes the timeline of the actual budget, the budget would be after July one, is that correct?
Correct, if we do July third, it wouldn't be an impact.
We can vote on the appropriations resolution and then I will, I I know what you're saying, but if we're gonna change the location, we'll have to do a special notice. Are you okay with just adjourning and then we'll special notice it?
Yeah, I either way works my brown act stamping, I assume.
So we'll adjourn this? Well, we gotta approve this one. Okay, so with that, any questions from Mr. Monrique's?
That's what I'm here for.
Stand the motion for this one.
I'll make a motion to approve.
I got a motion in a second for resolution twenty twenty-four to forty-six. And we'll.
Motion carries five zero.
Adjourn to, uh, April twenty, uh, April. June twenty-seventh at five P M. With that, uh, move on to item E. So we'll go on to item E, uh, one for reports, and we'll start with Mr. Mora. Alright, Mr. Dale?
I was hoping to tell the council tonight that we paved in front of Cross Elementary, unfortunately, it was delayed until Friday, so. I will get you pictures of before and after and a couple of meetings and and we're expecting a good, good turnout and good result. Um, we're getting um good results from the crack machine that you purchased before I got here and it's it's working. It's working its uh life out.
Can we call it something other than the crack machine? There we go.
Crack ceiling machine?
I like the crack machine.
Crack ceiling is not what you.
Not the crack machine, yeah, we're not, yeah.
It's a long night.
Is it, it's a crack ceiling machine, so. Good point. We're not selling anything. We're, we're filling in cracks in the streets, yes.
It did make me nervous. Thank you, Mr. Dale. Mr. Lopez?
First week of programming is underway. Uh, so many kids in this, uh, in the gym and, and at the pool. Uh, swim lessons and different things going on. It makes your head spin if you go in there and see all those little kids running around. But so far, so good. Knock on, knock on wood, no. Little Johnny hasn't gotten hurt or we haven't had any, uh, serious complaints about, uh, programming. So, uh, next week also on Friday, we have our movie at the pool. I will be showing Jungle Cruise, I believe.
Oh, yeah, I can't wait.
Uh, and, uh, so join us at, at the pool from seven to ten. It is also open swim. Uh, so you can come out here, uh, bring your family and dip your, dip it in the pool while you watch our movies. We have concessions and things.
Any special guests?
Yeah.
Yeah, me. So you could see me in, uh, in ridiculous clothing, but part of the job, I guess.
Do you, we know how many, but how many kids we haven't, uh, signed up right now between swim lessons, uh, gym activities and all that?
So I can give you, uh, I don't have an amount. It's, it's, it's a couple hundred at least in, in the gym alone. Uh, during, uh, are, we have a back, uh, uh, not a back order, but a, um, waiting list that wraps around the street for our swim lessons. So our swim lessons for the pool are one of the most popular things, uh, especially for the little ones. Um, the first and second levels are, uh, wait, so we had, we have opened more, uh, swim lessons uh, to kind of accommodate those needs. Uh, this year we were fortunate to have a lot more certified swim instructors as from our lifeguards. So, uh, we can offer evening and morning, uh, swim lessons. Uh, and we are having a high success rate with, uh, moving our open swim into the evening hours. So it allows families or people that are coming off of work to bring their kids after the five thirty, six o'clock hour to come in and enjoy free swim at the pool too. So we, we, we have, uh, been successful with our programs. I think, uh, maybe one or two camps have been, uh, not successful, but we've, uh, switched them out with soccer camps and basketball camps, which also have wait, wait lists that, uh, that, uh, we need to, like I said, we need our own facility at some point where we can offer services year round. But that's something maybe for, uh, strategic planning and, uh, so considers is a recreational facility.
Good. Thank you. Appreciate it.
I will say my son is very excited for soccer camp and he says you need to have it all year.
Um, well, first of all, thank you for approving the, the ERP. It's gonna be a huge change to, to the city and improve a lot of the, uh, process that we have in place internally. Um, also, well, the sound system finally kind of ninety-five percent. There is some adjustment that needs to be done, um, but I mean, we are collecting feedback from, uh, the employees that took, uh, the training today. So we're looking forward to send those feedbacks to the service provider and complete the, the implementation. And lastly, as a comment, uh, we open, uh, we, we are in the process to open a communication channel with CISA. It's, uh, part of the Homeland Security for, uh, CISA stands for, um, Cybersecurity and Infrastructure Security Agency. So they provide, uh, free services for some, um, uh, local government agencies. And we are looking forward to, uh, get those services, uh, um, for us as well. That's what we, that I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So just two things really quick. Uh, we have a promotion, um, on Monday. Officer Eric Coronado is going to be promoted to sergeant and that'll take place at nine o'clock on Monday. Everybody's invited. And then this week, actually this coming week, um.
Where would that be at?
I believe it's here at council. There's, there's another swearing in at the same time. Okay. So the Officer Fierro is taken to the Explorer slash cadets to the Explorer Academy in San Diego. And their graduation will be on Friday, the twenty-eighth. So they just moved it. It was originally slated for na- uh, a school in National City and they just moved it to La Mesa. We have the information. We'll get it out to council. Thank you. You're gonna bring them back once they graduate? Oh, yeah, absolutely. So then, then we'll have the opportunity to, to get, to go next year and kind of impart their knowledge on the new group. Awesome. Glad. We'd be happy to see them. Thank you.
I have nothing to report on the fire side, but I do have a question regarding that budget workshop. Would you like us to extend the invitation to Chief Lancer? Or do you want to keep it within the, the city?
Oh, he would be a department head right for us. Absolutely.
Victor's fried for the night.
Ms. Hallard, nice to see you back.
Pleasure to be back. Um, I'm very excited. I think you probably already, um, that it was already reported at the last memo. But this Monday, Elisa Barajas is joining us as our literacy full-time coordinator that is fully funded through, um, our California Library Literacy Services Grant. It's fully burdened, um, salary. Um, so it's very exciting that, um, we'll have this one person working full-time, providing family literacy, adult literacy, um, conversation and English as a second language. We have amazing people that are loving the library and literacy. I mean, it, it just, it touches your heart. Um, but, um, our lunch at the library kicked off on the tenth. We started off with fifty lunches, um, each day and they upped it to sixty lunches each day. Um, so we're serving sixty, um, fam- children, zero to eighteen, um, lunches, Monday through Friday, uh, along with activities at the, at the library. Um, on Mondays, Mondays and Fridays are very, very popular because we have a, a contract with, uh, an art design studio that comes in and they do cooking classes and, and all kinds of, of art classes, all kind, you know, um, bringing in a lot of great activities.
Is there a sign up or waitlist for this?
There, there is no, you show, you come and you, yeah, yeah, you, you show up. So, um, and then our, our staff Elizabeth, who is our literacy coordinator, who runs the grants. Uh, she's the one that's doing the lunch at the library. And beyond doing the Monday through Friday at the library, she also takes a team out to the two affordable communities here in Imperial, um, two different apartment complexes. And they provide lunch at the library there as well and, um, programming. So it's, um, a lot of heartfelt, amazing programs bringing, um, um, to the community. If you walk through the library, I posted a picture of staff putting together little beehive because I thought it was so cute. And I walked back outside and I was like, what? They have flowers and bees and everything added to it. And I was like, okay, I need another picture. So I'll, I'll get one at the end of the week and post that. Um, the team is amazing.
Glad, glad to hear that. All great stuff coming.
If I can just add, my kids are both like obsessed with going to the library and reading. I don't, I don't know how they're mine. I definitely was not at that age, but they had so much fun. They said they made pasta. And yeah, like, and it's just crazy. Like it's so cool. They're so excited to go to the library all the time. So like constantly it's daily. Can we go to the library? Can we go to the library? So, um, you and your team are doing a fabulous job. And my son said that he has a job there. Reading books to little kids. I don't know.
Yes, that's what he told me, so. Buddy reader.
So you have English classes for people that want to learn English?
Yes, English as a second language.
The citizenship class is still going?
Yes, we do. Yeah, yep.
About Spanish classes?
We'll, we'll get there. What other languages?
Thank you. No, thank you for all the hard work. Appreciate that. All right. How about we go, uh, to our city attorney?
Nothing for me.
All right. About our city manager?
Nothing for me to see any, Mr. Mayor.
All right. How about our city clerk?
Nothing for me.
All right. We'll start on this side. Ms. Basa Martinez?
Um, I, I want to comment on the library. I appreciate your guys' social media presence. I love it. I'm always reposting your stuff and then it's amazing. I, I work, you know, during the day, but I'm like, man, I wouldn't go to that. Like. You guys do such great projects and it's amazing. Uh, our little library here has so much going on. I love that. So it's, it's a jewel to have here in our city. And if you haven't visited, I suggest anybody to go. My sixteen-year, almost seventeen-year-old got a library card not too long ago and he ordered books and we ordered zip books that we probably need to return. I apologize. Um, but, but I know, no fines. But it's amazing that, you know, we have all these, um, items at our disposal, like the zip books and the cooking classes. You can go to Kung Fu here. I mean, it's amazing. So applaud to you guys.
Kung Fu is through recreation.
Yeah, but I mean, it's still like within their area. So I appreciate that. Um, in my other thing that I did, I went to the Inspire Her, uh, Women's Business Showcase. It was actually held in Alcentro, but placed by Brawley Chamber of Commerce. And so it was amazing to see, I think, the women out there with their businesses. And you can go around the whole place and, and visit and buy stuff. So, um, anytime that pops up again, I highly encourage, um, our Imperial residents who are women business owners or homeowners will have home businesses to, um, have a booth out there to get that exposure as well.
Um, just a little bit of a report on Imperial Valley Healthcare District. Um, so I will say that the board met its first three milestones that they actually checked off, like their task list. So the first one was completed, um, making the district boundaries for the seven voting districts. So it'll be for the healthcare district that was then sent to the voter registrar. So once, um, two thousand twenty-six and two thousand twenty-eight, you'll have three, um, council member or directors be up for election and then, um, four for two thousand twenty-eight. So by the, into two thousand twenty-eight, you'll have seven elected council member or my brain is fried too. Um, you'll have seven elected directors. Um, they also gave, uh, recommendation dates. Our board gave recommendation dates of October one for Laughco to dissolve Heffernan and then December one for Laughco to dissolve PMH. So the ball's kind of in Laughco's court now for that. Um, and the board also approved a letter of intent to enter into negotiations, um, with El Centro Regional Medical Center. Um, that means, you know, that we're officially in active negotiations and going through that. So there's been no real deal out there yet. I know there's been a lot of press that said there has been. There's still an active negotiations, um, but yeah, so moving forward, I think doing a lot of things that a lot of people said that couldn't be done. So, but yeah, that's all I have to report.
Thank you. Ms. Benosa? Mr. Tucker?
Good, thank you.
You're good. All right. Um, just same way, uh, the, uh, couple things with Laughco. You know, we're gonna be coming up here and dealing with the healthcare district. So we know that's coming. The, um, what else did we get? Um, and we know crews are out there. We watching, uh, got a couple calls on crews, uh, crack ceiling uh, from residents. So I did appreciate that. So, um, all I gotta say is keep up the good work. Thank you very much. Um, I know the, we were talking about and I was gonna back, piggyback on the, on the bee thing. When I saw that, I was like, are they really gonna make beehives?
Actually, um, Lee Davis is, um, has a background in bees. So she's actually presenting classes, I believe, to- tomorrow and Friday. Um, so she's bringing in where you can see through the bees and all that. So, yeah, a lot of, a lot of.
I appreciate all that. That's really nice. But, uh, I think other than that, I, uh, hope everybody has a good, safe weekend. I know it's gonna be hot. Keep cool, drink a lot of water, have fun and, uh, have a good evening. I'll adjourn this meeting at nine oh three.